Hey, how you doing?
All right.
Good.
Yeah.
How you doing? All right. You're fine, guys? Best part? I guess.
Chair.
Hello, how are you?
Chair.
College, the main college?
Yes, they are.
It's in the spirit. We dropped that on you.
I don't, I don't, I don't know.
Hello?
That's me, Alan.
I'm trying to get it on.
And that's the other front.
We're like there.
You're out. It's back and forth.
Dropping about a bit of cotton to the hotel. Yeah. I thought we were there. We were all.
Although I can't hear you.
That's not bad. That's a bad thing either.
It's a young issue.
I know.
It's a young issue.
It's not my fault. It's an issue with students.
Oh, this is a good one. Sure.
Yeah.
That's what I'm saying.
I'll tell you why. She's at home. What's with the job?
Yes. That is true.
If somebody was paying.
I'm not.
It's a hard way to do that.
She's still here.
Yeah.
Tell me, can you call?
How are you?
We're going to go ahead and call this special call meeting of Johnson City Board of Education for order. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. Purpose of this is to talk about our, um, our proposals for going back to school in person. So, um, first thing we do with each meeting is we start with a moment of silence. So I ask everybody to join us with that, and then we'll move with the rest of the agenda. Thank you. Dr. Barnett's going to lead this special allegiance next. Everybody, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we need to adopt our agenda. Is there a motion? For a second? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay. Correspondents, delegations, and communications, this is the point where we have folks who have signed up to address us, come up to the podium and address us. I will ask that everybody, as you address us, please maintain your mask over your nose and your mouth. Everyone will have two minutes. Mrs. Paul will be keeping time, and she will raise her hand when you have thirty seconds left in your time. When your time is up, please conclude your sentence, and then we'll ask the next person to come to the podium. The first person to sign up to address us is Mr. Joe Patrick. Could you please come up and give us your name and your address?
Joe Patrick, 101 West Chestnut Street. Um, good evening. Two minutes, really. A teacher who does two minutes, it's not, it doesn't work. Um, so I'm here tonight just to basically speak on behalf of the teachers. I want to start with saying this. We want to go back to school. We want our kids back in the classroom. But we want them back in there safely. And that's, that's the difference we're talking about here. Like most of you, I get constant phone calls. It's gotten worse in the past two weeks. Today, I had about two hundred text messages before noon, which is hard to do when you're teaching, by the way. But I had to finally just turn the phone off and save it to the sun for a while. Teachers are concerned. The staff are concerned, basically because we keep seeing numbers rise. And in the schools that we've seen open already, we are seeing cases show up. We've seen Kingsport recently, Greenville, some of the counties around us. We've seen some schools have up to eighty students quarantined. And the real, the real problem with that is, how do we, as teachers, manage that? You know, how do we manage the students going in and out at different times and for different periods of time? That's a big concern for us, but also the health and safety of our staff is a concern. We have teachers who are already having to be out for different reasons, for being ill and for being, you know, for being suspected of having it, and they don't. But they're having to be out in the classroom and teaching from home, and teaching from home is a whole other experience, by the way. As you know, we're doing that right now, already, really. But it's, it's becoming an issue of just safety for us. And so, we want to be back in school. That's not up for debate. We want our kids back. We want them back safely. We want in a safe way that it's safe for our students, but also safe for the staff. And so I want you to consider that tonight, as you go through this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Danielle Gudrich. Please state your name and your address.
Thank you. Danielle Gudrich, 314 Zinko. I don't have to talk about the feelings of virtual or how Bristol schools are going back as they see these issues. You know this. What I do want to tell you is the New York Times pointed to by September, most students will have fallen behind, some losing the equivalent of a full school year's worth of academic gains. I don't hold you responsible for the spring, as we didn't know what we were up against then, but we do now. Greenville is pointing to a blast meeting being in high risk. How is that possible when the governor says states, a city reproduction rate is one to five? And in Tennessee, ours is one to one or below, or that the fatality rate is only point zero seven, point two six, or that ninety-nine percent of the smothering are not at all, or that on the pandemic, the emergency scale is barely qualifies as a two. We have Sweden out of it. Here's their daily fatality, and they didn't mask, distance, or shut down. We have Switzerland that is in a similar position, that is using treatments that work. That is the lead we should follow. Instead, we have the U.S. and states like California that did continue to do masking and distancing daily fatality, bouncing back up. So we need to stop this nonsense. These interventions are not working. Let me lastly point to your oath. That you will ensure that the children of the district receive the best education available anywhere in the U.S. Our kids aren't even receiving the best education available in the county right now. Your oath says, place the interest of children above all others and every decision that you make. Yet some on this board continue to place the interests of grandparents at risk over children when they have the virtual option to protect those. Maintain the achievement of all students who are listed in class, et cetera. That's another part of your oath. Yet we have some pit kids in school and others not. So I'm not a lawyer, but I have to imagine that this is unequal treatment. It goes against the equal treatment clause just as much as it goes against your oath. Also in your oath, it says, base my decisions upon available facts. The facts are, we have countries that didn't do these interventions out of this. We have the vast majority of health experts, including the White House new advisor, Stanford Dr. Atlas, saying kids should be in school and that masks and distancing are not recommended. Lastly, your oath focuses on the education of our children. Health is the responsibility of the doctor and the parent. So please get back to the duties you swore an oath to and get our kids back in a normal learning environment before it causes any more harm. Thank you.
Next up is Bridget Chief. Yes, sir.
Please have someone adjust.
Sure.
Second. Hi, Bridget Chief, 131 Rockingham Avenue, Stride, September. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a daughter in eighth grade at Liberty Bell. First, I want to thank you for your, sorry, I'm not used to wearing masks, to serve in our school district and spend your time trying to make decisions that are the very best for our students and teachers. I know that this year has not been an easy one, and my prayers have been with you all. However, those are hard decisions, and they must be made at this time. Those decisions need to be based on, not on fear, but on what is truly best for our children. We, as parents, know what is best for our children, and seventy percent of the Johnson City parents want their kids in school. You are elected to carry out the will of the majority, especially when the others have the option to have school remotely as they wish. It is a choice. You are not forcing parents to send their kids to school. Also, most of the older at-risk teachers would still have the option to teach virtually. Or those who don't, they can choose what to do as grown adults, as all of the other essential workers have had to do during this time. Again, it is about what is best for our children. They are our future, and the mental anguish that these last five months has taken on them is obvious to every parent, and is a nationally known fact that it is deteriorating their mental health. How is it not just as important, or even more so in some cases, as their physical health, their mental health? Furthermore, as this virus has proven to have little to no effect on children, it is preposterous that we are hindering them in any way to get the academic and physical education they deserve while developing those very important personal interaction skills to thrive and succeed in life. And my last point, absolutely none of this is necessary for a virus that has over ninety-nine percent survival rate. I am for you, representing the majority of parents in our district. Please get our kids back in school, learning and interacting normally as they should be. For God did not give us the spirit of fear or timidity, but power, love, and sound mind. Please take that into consideration when you make your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Last is Kate Craig.
Can everybody hear me? My name is Kate Craig. I'm at four. Maybe I'll stand back for a minute a little. I'm at 410 Lambeth Drive, and I'm the chair of the Washington County Democratic Party. Thank you for your time and devotion to the students in Johnson City. As a graduate of Science Hill, class of nineteen ninety-nine, a former student of Michelle Trees, I know we're all here because we care about our community. I'm here to remind you that whatever decision is made today will only affect students, parents, administrators, and their families. It will also affect the community. Last week, I had a family member in the hospital for five days, and I couldn't visit them due to COVID, or the COVID restrictions. When they were taken to the emergency room, I had to sit outside the ER on a bench for seven hours as I waited for updates. And this isn't just me. Three of my neighbors are going through the same thing. One who had a father in critical condition for over two weeks, and she couldn't visit him. Small businesses are struggling. We lost a Willow Tree last week, and lots of others. Restaurants and small businesses have had to close. An anonymous source from inside the Johnson City school system informed me that one, one staff member at Liberty Bell tested positive at the beginning of August, and the, and the employees who interacted with them weren't told. They didn't know that this one staff member was quarantining. Imagine how quickly that will spread and impact school when that isn't being shared, and right now, students aren't there. We don't write laws for the quote-unquote silent majority. We write laws for everyone. And we don't presume to know what forced families to make impossible decisions and send their kids back into the classroom. Some families just didn't have a choice. Every school has seen COVID cases and outbreaks who return to in-person learning. Shouldn't party number one be keeping kids, teachers, administrators, their families, and our communities safe, safe and healthy? Obviously, the long-term goal is in-person learning, but we won't get there by rushing the process. Just like in the classroom, we learned arithmetic before we learned calculus. We don't run before we walk, and right now, we are learning how to walk in this new environment. We can identify the gaps and work to meet them as a community, but there is no way to fill the void of the loss of a loved one. And that's what we're risking if we send our kids back to the classroom too soon. Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is to review the school reopen. I'll turn it over to Dr. Barnett and his staff now to go through that.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Ballot. First thing we're going to review are the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one protocols, and that's been revised. It's our protocols for in-person learning. Before we do that, though, I would like to go through our proposal for Johnson City Schools' in-person reentry. The plan has been for Monday, August thirty-first. In talking with Johnson City Transit, logistically, that's the earliest that we can pull that, that off. Also, food service will be ready to, with food purchases, and have that ready as well. Grades pre-K through six, plans in-person learning on a five-day, all-day, everyday basis. Recognizing that face-to-face instruction is the most effective method for the majority of our students, we are committed to bringing students back from pre-K through sixth grade, bring in-person learning five days a week while adhering to all health and safety standards and guidelines. This will require full compliance of the district's in-person safety protocols, which Dr. Wallace is going to review in just a few moments. But it'll resemble the more traditional and familiar pre-COVID educational model that our students are accustomed to, and our teachers are as well. In grades seven through twelve, we're looking at in-person learning path. Due to the sheer size of the student classrooms, we have mini classrooms in our secondary schools that have up to thirty-five students, and it'd be very difficult to come back with a full start, so. Since at Liberty Bell Middle School, Johnson High School receive a blend of face-to-face learning and remote learning, students will attend schools in their buildings two days per week and participate in remote learning. On the other days, more like a college schedule. To maintain proper health and safety guidelines, students will be grouped by alphabet. Group A, last name begins with letters A through K. Group B, last name begins with letters L through Z. Group A will have in-person learning on Monday and Thursday, while Group B will be in-person on Tuesday and Fridays. Each Wednesday, it'll be a hundred percent remote instruction for students, and a lot of that'd be teachers checking in with students. Yes, ma'am?
I just want to make sure that it's clear that you're talking about people that have chose, that chose to do in-person.
Absolutely.
This is all of that.
That's a great point, because we're going to continue remote learning for all the families that chose it. And in fact, over the next couple of days, we expect some families to say, I want to do remote. And there may be some families that say, you know what? I like that plan. I want to try to, they need to contact their school and contact the school secretary and principal, and then we'll see about working that in. This gives us time to do that.
People have chosen already. That, that choice will stand unless they contact their schools and see if they can work out a change.
That's right. Thank you for that.
And the other point, just to emphasize, especially for teachers, but for students too, that when they are not in-person, the teacher won't be doing both in-person and virtual at the same time.
That's right. That's too heavy a lift for, for the teachers. I said that, I think it's a board need. They'll have work assigned, they'll check in with students, but the idea that, that teacher would be doing remote and in-person for those groups, so you've got A group and a B group, and that's, that's how we would go about that. Teacher would teach a lesson on Monday, teach a lesson on Tuesday, teach a lesson on Thursday and Friday, check in with students on, in the middle of the week as well. And also, just as a logistic issue, if you've got children with different last names, that sort of thing, those students would be allowed. Those families would pick, which they would, they would be either go to A group or B group, so the families stay together on their schedule. So, realize that that would be a big burden for families and unnecessary. If community spread decreases significantly, or if it, as it increases, the plan may be adjusted after fall break to allow more students in grades seven through twelve to attend in-person some days. So we'll keep an eye on that. There's just really large numbers. We need to get our students back in front with teachers. Teachers want that. And as Mr. Patrick said, they want it safely. And one of the things that's going to be really important, we're going to be pushing out public service announcements to, to do it safely, do it right, so we can go back with all of our students in-person, seven through twelve, as soon as possible. It's going to be interesting, and to have those large numbers and to have high school, middle school students back, it's going to be really important, and this is one of the things that the regional health department, with the questions we asked on Monday when they came and presented to the board during the workshop, is, you know, are there some differences between pre-K to sixth graders, elementary age, and then your secondary grade students? And there's some, there's thought to be some physical differences in how you interact with the COVID-19 virus. So we feel like that's the best way to start it out, and then we'll adjust when we can. And the hope is to keep our students in school, keep with school safe. We're going to have cases of COVID-19 in our school system. We'll identify those. We will do, we'll go back and see who the students have been around, and then the health department works with us. And as I said, Dr. Wallace will walk through all of that in just a couple of minutes.
One, one other point on that that I believe some of your staff made is that parents that do want to change their mind need to let their school know by, Friday by four P.M.
And, and we will put that out on, through the schools, so that is communicated through the school back to, and then the parent back to the school. But the sooner we know, the better, for planning and personnel reasons. We have teachers that are assigned to be remote teachers, and we want to make sure that if we have to adjust, make any kind of adjustments, we can do that before we go into in-person instruction. And also, practice those procedures and this, what's expected in school, making sure that everybody has what they need and they're comfortable. Logistically, this is, this is, there's a lot more to this than, than just sending kids back. So we want to do it right. We want to do it safe, and we're excited about getting our, our younger students and our, all of our older students that want to be there, and their families have made that choice back into our school system.
So to be clear, if you've chosen, if you're happy with the choices that you've made, you, you don't have to do anything.
I don't do anything.
And also, I know that Dr. Wallace is going to go over these protocols, but you've said it, but I want to make sure that you've heard again that this has the blessing of the health department.
That's correct. And, you know, I can foresee, just from communication I've had with parents, and they're going both ways. So we want to be flexible. We want our families to be comfortable with the plan, and we want to be safe. And we want to make sure that we can get our students back in front of their teachers, and our teachers in-person with students, but do it safely. So Dr. Wallace is going to go through the protocols. Feel like that's really important. We need some changes, to get, receiving some guidance from the state level as far as how we'll handle this. So you will not see red, yellow, and green. You will see our protocol for how we manage and work through cases of COVID-19 in our schools based on the level of COVID numbers in the community, that was.
So I think the first thing that needs to be said is, you all had an opportunity to, to review and, and look at these protocols at the retreat on Monday. Basically, what we did is we took the yellow protocol. We tried to adjust that based on the information that we had, with the major change being, do you mind? With the major, is that good? Mr. Hager, can you hear me fine? With the major change being, we, we changed from mask only in common areas to mask at all times. And we sent that, that recommendation to the Washington County Regional Health Department. They agreed with that. I asked specifically for some information about that. She sent us a whole list of the most recent information and guidance from CDC for that, so. So that's the biggest change in, in our protocols for safety. Some of the other things that we've talked about in the past, physical distancing when possible. I like the term physical distancing better than social distancing, because we can still be social when we're six feet apart. So physical distancing, six feet when possible, that's not always going to be possible. We recognize that. I met with preschool teachers yesterday, trying to socially distance three, four-year-olds. It's not always easy. It's not always easy with high school students, so. But we've got some plans in place for our desk. We've also tried to provide barriers when those are not possible. We've ordered some additional plexiglass barriers for all of our schools that we hope will be in very soon. Of course, we have the mask that we provided for our student body, one mask by the state per child per day. And we also have cloth masks that the state has provided to cloth, that cloth mask for teachers.
Dr. Wallace? Yes, sir. Children will be free to bring their own cloth masks.
Absolutely. Absolutely. In fact, we would encourage that. The, the state originally, as, as y'all probably will recall, said four masks per child per day. They backed away from that. There may be some hope that we'll get some more, but the more that students wear their own masks, things that they're comfortable with, that their parents may be provided, something that they think is cute, whatever. We think that'll help as far as the supply goes. So I can walk through those individual protocols. We're going to post those publicly, but they are pretty much the, the yellow protocols that we had in the past. The reason for the change in protocol, and I think it's important for people to hear this. Initially, we used the Epicure rubric, which were the only rubric that we had in the state. Most, a lot of states used that, a lot of different districts used that throughout. Most, a lot of states used that, a lot of different districts used that throughout the state. And we used the number ten as a baseline for community spread. That's still a, a good number for community spread. People will sometimes talk about it as being, well, that was specifically for nursing homes. Well, it was specifically for protocol for nursing homes because you have spread in the community. So it meant that you've got enough spread in the community that you have to definitely protect your most vulnerable. So some people may say, "Well, why are we away from green, yellow, and red?" So we've always talked about not having one single metric as the deciding factor for the decisions that we've made. The White House Task Force did put out a state-by-state map of every individual school or every individual county within the state, based on two specific metrics. They, they used the per-one-hundred-thousand number that we use. They used it, and they had a different metric. If it was a hundred cases per one-hundred-thousand, if you were over that, you were in the red. And they also used a community spread presented positivity of over ten percent. If you were over in both of those, you would be in the red for the county. If you had one of those two factors, you would be in the yellow. We are currently in the yellow, based on the White House, the latest information from the White House Task Force. So most of the counties around us are in the yellow, ones to our north are in the red. So using that factor, we don't use that as a decision on how we close schools. What we do use it for, if you look at the other packet that's in the, the other information that's in the packet, we use it as a determination on how we make decisions on what we close. So the COVID response rubric, which has been provided to us by the Tennessee Department of Health, it has a low, moderate, and high. So we would be in that moderate category. And so you can actually see how we look at every individual case. So if there's an individual case that's identified, if it's someone that we feel like, if it's a situation where we feel like we can make those, that trace directly to people, we might just have to close, send a few people home for quarantine. If it's a little bit broader, we might have to make sure that we close a classroom, possibly a wing. The whole goal, as the governor has said repeatedly, the whole goal is not to have to close a district. So our hope is that by using this rubric, based on the Washington, the, the White House Task Force, we'll be able to make very specific decisions that only affect the direct population. So any questions about the protocol or the rubric?
Not about the rubric, but you were talking about materials we've ordered, and I've heard, I've heard that some of the materials that the state sent may not be adequate for some teachers, but we have things that we've ordered ourselves, correct?
Right. So the, the governor mentioned in his opening of schools press conference, that teachers were going to receive a kit, and that kit was going to have things like hand sanitizer, gloves, masks for teachers, some cleaning supplies. So we, I was told last week that there's probably going to be a couple weeks still before those supplies come in. They have provided the masks for the students, they have provided the face shields, they have provided X-ray thermometers. But they, the other things are going to take a while. But we have been, make, been purchasing stuff really since March. We've been trying to get ahead of stuff. So we have our own supply of masks, all of our cleaning supplies. We have purchased a lot of dividers. We've decided to even upgrade those dividers after some additional discussion with principals, and have teachers have an opportunity to review those. So the only thing that we have ordered, that we have yet received, is the gloves. We do have enough gloves that are in small packets for teachers. Of course, they will get the ones from the governor. Our assumption is, the reason why we can't get gloves is because the state is now collecting all of those. But yes, Miss Wallace, a long answer to your question, we do have lots of material that we purchase.
So if a teacher has a specific concern about some of the safety or some of the materials they have, or they feel like they have a, a need in their classroom, they should...
Go to the principal. And one of the things that I said very clearly, clearly to principals is, I want teachers to be comfortable. When the school, when students come back in-person, do you have the PPE you need? Do you have, are you comfortable with the layout of your room? We'll do whatever we can to get it to be that way. Using the guidance and the protocols from the American Academy of Pediatrics, which calls for three to six feet. If you can't do six feet, then you...
As much as possible.
Wear a mask. And it also calls for wearing a mask. So the, the American Academy of Pediatrics is their most recent guidance, and they base it on the most recent research, is to do that, and through the CDC as well. So we want our teachers to be, to feel comfortable about it. We need them to have, instructionally what they need, but also safety, PPE, cleaning materials, everything they need. They ask their principal, and if they do not get what they need, not comfortable, they can reach out to Dr. Wallace, reach out to me. We want to, it's got to go right, and we've got to be strict about our procedures. One of my friends in the school system I worked in years ago had, they started back, but they're doing more of a hybrid with every grade level, all the way through, and they're still there, and they had to close the school because you had a group that sat at a table and ate. Now, they could eat in a room, but what they would need to do is spread out, because it's, you know, you end up with one of the teachers that has tests positive, the others are on quarantine. So we've got to really follow those safety procedures and protocols to, to do this effectively and, and hopefully get all of our students back in school soon.
I think you had shared that story with me, and the group that ate together was a group of teachers.
That's correct.
It was not teachers and students.
It was a group of teachers. So we want our teachers to be able to do that. We just want you, like when we do, here at Central Office, when they have a meeting, and then we eat, and we all spread out, so you're not, it's, it's just not going, you know, fly through and get somebody. So we've been successful with that. We've been very successful with that so far. You know, we started our edge care programs back, and we never stopped. And I, I'd always reiterate that, we started those edge care programs, we kept them open. We didn't start them, kept them open during the time when the governor had us closed in the spring, in the spring, and we kept them open all summer, and we've kept them open in the fall, to provide that service. But it is also a good example of how you can follow the protocols, and it's not perfect, but keep people safe and keep them in school.
And, and we have some experience in the last, you know, we've had, as you said, we've had students in, in schools since, since the pandemic began, but now we've had some classes with some of our youngest students, and what's our experience been in keeping masks on?
That's, that's, you've got a preschool teacher in the room, and the students are amazingly really good at that. You know, they always, they always surprise you. It reminds me way back when, you know, years ago when I was a principal, and I had a student who's now at the Naval Academy, and I had a parent who said, "There's no way that these kids can do this program that you're asking them to do, it's too hard." And he met me after the program, and he said, "I really am amazed at what these children can do." And that's a good example. Parents teach them, preschool teachers who've been, and kindergarten teachers and first graders, they've all been instructed to teach kids how to do it. It's not going to be perfect, it's going to help keep everybody healthy. And what does need to be perfect is the adults, not, not perfect, intentionally, is the adults making sure we model and follow safety protocols, so that our students do it. And then our older students, they really want to get everybody back in school, they've got to model, and they have to follow the safety procedures and the protocols, so we can get more and more students back, and then we're back in full force.
Just as our athletes came to understand, it's up to them to keep things as safe as they can. All of our students will have to be the same.
That's huge.
Dr. Wallace, back to the rubric here for how to handle cases. Are we going to educate all of our teachers and staff on the rubrics, so that everybody understands what the, what happens if there are wing cases or identified?
Yeah, so all the principals receive that, assuming that you all approve this plan tonight. They've all received that, they'll have an opportunity to go back and work with that with their faculty. So they're aware. We're also going to publicize it, obviously make sure our community is aware of that, because I think that's, one of the things that we want to be very clear about, we can't pick and choose what bits and pieces of advice that we're going to follow. So if the advice is, based on this rubric, we're going to follow this advice, we're going to have to follow it, and, and it likely will mean that we'll have a class closure, or that we'll have potentially a wing closure. We think if everybody follows the rules, the safety protocols, that we'll have to, we can avoid the most of that. The other thing I've...
So can I, can I just interject real quickly here? If we have a class closure or a wing closure, that doesn't mean no school for those children.
That's correct. They'll still, they'll still receive instructions.
Exactly.
They'll just have to pivot to the online version.
Right. While the, while the quarantine period or the isolation period is, is running.
That's correct.
So I have a question on that.
Yes, ma'am.
So my child's going to be on a B schedule at Science Hill. So if he ends up not being able to go to school because a classroom of his has been closed, would he, how would that teacher, who's teaching just the B kids online, teach the B kids who are no longer there? I guess the whole class might be.
Right. So I, I think Dr. Timms and Dr. Van Laeroy are going to address that a little bit. You can just accept it, so that may be answered, exactly how that process is going to look.
So Dr. Wallace, I have a couple of concerns. My phone has been crazy, and, and that's a good thing, because that's why I'm in the seat. So I agree with you, Dr. Crabtree, about teachers are really eager to get back, but there's some that are really nervous.
Right.
There are some teachers who do not have all of the things that they need in their room, and I'm hoping that they will contact their principals, like, like you said, but I think some of them are a little nervous about that. Teachers are buying their own face shields, so they will, can we be assured that they're going to have those materials? I hope that the Sunk Mask from the state is...
They've had their face shield for, golly, principals, when did I send face shields?
Two weeks, but...
Two, three weeks, so...
But if we give everything out in, on August first, on August thirty-first, we'd have to give them again. So we've told them that we have all that, we're just waiting for them to get through the most immediate challenges and give that out. So some of them are calling you, when we have it for them, we're just waiting for closer to time, so we won't, they won't lose it.
Okay. And they're aware that it's there, and you're just not going to get it yet?
Right. Because we'd have to give it to them again.
Right. And so I know the, we've gone to the, looking at the A B schedule, how does this have an impact on chorus, band, fine arts, CTE, hands-on kinds of classes?
So again, I think that's something that...
That's, that's a question that are answered by principals and supervisors.
Okay. So that's coming out.
Yep.
And then last concern, on that class day, the first day kids come in, if we have more kids sitting in that class than we can comfortably attend to, what happens to that handful of kids that we just don't have room for you right now? Where do they go at that moment?
Well, we'll know about that ahead of time. So I mean, we're, we're going to know, whatever deadline is put on, what students are going to be remote, what students are not going to be remote, we're going to know our class size, just like we would any other school. So we'll be able to make those adjustments.
Okay. So that might include schedule changes?
It's a huge puzzle, and that, you know, like, the last meeting I talked about, Liberty Vale, Science Hill staff, hand-scheduled, twenty-three-hundred students and twelve-hundred students, and they have to work that, that, that puzzle out for each student. So that's why it's so important for families not to communicate with us, but with the school.
Right.
And then what we do here is look at personnel, do we need to hire somebody else? Do we need to add staff? What do we need to do? But the families are good about making sure that we know, that we want have, you know, if they're enrolled in that class or they're not, they're not just going to show up at a class, they're going to show up at the school office, and then we will put them in a class.
Okay. Because I know their first day of school, kids just pop out of nowhere.
Well, that's the reason, you know, that's one of the strengths of this, this model. If you, you looked at how the huge increase in COVID cases, when we were scheduled to come back to school, you know, we really anticipated being able to come back in person, and then that changed. But our teachers have had this opportunity to be in the building, to be working, they've been so flexible and amazing, you know, to sometimes do things when it was, when it's not working, to go home and to work, and make sure students are receiving education. Some of it's really hard, I mean, some of it's, we, the state, as I said in our last meeting, expects six and a half hours a day of instruction. That's our, that's the learning plan. That is something we had to submit. And you think about the task that students and teachers are, are working through, it's new and it's hard. It's not three hours of, of morning work, it's a whole day of work, and it's, I'm just so proud of, of what our teaching staff, our coaches, and our principals, and all of our support staff, everybody's been working through it. It's been so hard. And I think this is one of those things, we do it, do it right, it's going to take some of that load off.
And the thirty-first will not be the first day at school, the tenth was. So, I mean, we already know who they all are, and they've had a choice to pick remote, and they'll have the choice to let them know again by Friday, so we'll know whichever ones don't pick remote. That's who we're expecting in the schools on the third person.
But I, I do think, to your point, Ms. Trace, is that we may have some students that weren't planning to come, that want to come now, and do they need to contact school, and, and, and then we can work through that. That's a great question, to make sure that families know, contact your school, contact your school secretary, get it enrolled, and if we need to add staff and do the things we need to do, we'll do that.
Dr. Wallace? So we learned on Monday, our two hours with Dr. Thomas, less her being there, and answering all of our questions, we've learned more about contact tracing and HIPAA than I ever thought I would know. So one of the things I hear from, from several people is, well, we don't hear when someone in our school has, has a case. Can you, can you address that?
Sure. That's the, one of the next things I was going to get to. I just want to say before, before I leave this point, because if you all will recall, and I think it's important for people to know, when we first started developing this plan, at the end of June, Dr. Barnett wanted it out by first of July, because it was very important that we wanted to communicate to our parents. Our Epicure number, which was the number that we were using, was below five. So we were in the breeze. As we progressed through July, we slowly moved up to the yellow, and then we skyrocketed up past the red. At the end of July and August, at one point, I think we were almost thirty-four. So we went from, in about a five-week period of time, and the number to one-hundred-thousand went from under five to over thirty-three.
Thirty-four point four over there, right?
Thirty-four point four. So I know, Mr. Kinnick has been tracking that. And one of the other considerations, as we come back, has been, we have seen a flattening of those numbers. We've even seen a slight downturn. Dr. Kurski mentioned today on our call, he's hopeful that those numbers will continue to stay flat, and that some of the things that we have done have, have helped support that process. So, any other questions about the rubric, the Washington, or the, the White House Task Force, or the return to school protocols? All right. So the next thing that you'll see in your packet is the, a little information, it's a flow chart, it says COVID relief-related questions. And this holds to your question. So a lot of times, we used to have this in safety in general, so it, it's really not any different, it's just a different avenue. So we might have a student that might be suicidal, or a student that might even potentially be homicidal. You know, that's, that was our big issue all the time in the past, before COVID came. And sometimes we'd have teachers say, "Well, I need to know this information." And the response that I would give politely was, "Not always. You, you need to know that information if it directly impacts you. That student has rights as well." Part of our process, we have a very, as you all know, we have a very dedicated safety team that involves our SROs, our mental health professionals. We're providing that support for those teachers. If that's, if that teacher's a threat, obviously legally, we have to make that notification. If we think that student's a threat to the classroom, legally, we have, and done, we've done in the past, we make that notification. The same thing's true with this. So when we get a positive case, which we have had positive cases, or we have a suspected positive, we have a very specific process that's in place. And then we've even expanded upon that, as we're preparing for students to come in. So if we look at that flow chart, at the top of that, it's any COVID-related question, the first person that's going to help support that, whether we've got students coming in in the morning, or our clinic nurses. The Johnson City School Board, under the direction of Dr. Bells and now Dr. Barnett, made a committed effort to get the nurses in every one of our schools. We have, we have very talented professionals at every one of our schools. So they're going to help. They've got a list, they've been trained by our RN, they're going to have some additional training on Monday, there's some things to look for. So for instance, if a student has a history of, or has a history of allergies, and have a runny nose, and I think Dr. Thomas used this example on Monday, obviously, we're not going to send that student home, if that's the only indicator that they have for ten days or fourteen days or whatever.
And it's not new or different?
It's not new or different, which is exactly the words that you used. We're going to screen that. That will be the first person of contact for every school. Then, if the question's a little bit more than that, it's going to go to three of our system-wide RNs. Linda Eads, Kristy Kotrell, and Trudy Breitman. They, all three have, have been designated schools, and each school has a designated person that they will call. And then all of that, if it's a question on quarantine or isolation, will run through me, Jennifer Norton, who's an RN as well. And we coordinate all of those decisions with Washington County Health Department. So if there's some question whether or not this is an in-home contact, if this is a direct contact, that's the decision tree that we make. And then we work our way backwards. So who are the people that have been directly contacted? And we make those connections. If they have been directly contacted, a direct contact to that person, they will be notified. Legally, we have that obligation. There is no attempt or desire to hide anything from anybody. But they also have rights as well. There's HIPAA requirements, and in students' cases, the HIPAA and FOPA requirements that we have to follow. So we have to certainly protect those. If a student, if you have been in contact with that person through that tracing process, and it's a very specific process, Washington County Health Department just had training for all the local schools and all the representatives that are, that are supporting that. You will be made aware, and then you will work through that next sheet. And if you look at that situation, this actually says student name, because it's a similar process. But you can see down the situation, and there's five different scenarios, what the individual requirement would be for the isolation and or quarantine. So it is a very specific process, and it is following directly the guidance of the Washington County Regional Health Department. Questions about that?
So just to make it clear, who makes the decision on whether somebody has to quarantine and who has to, who can return to work, or return to school?
That ultimately falls into responsibility of Washington County Regional Health Department. We just consult with them, tell them we've got a case of that. So we, of course, now we have school rules, regulations that say if a teacher is in close contact, then here's the responsibility, that's FRC, that Ms. Haron talked to you about, and then Patterson talked to you about on Monday. But as far as, this is a, this is a direct contact, we're following that direct guidance from Washington County Regional Health Department.
And to kind of further expand on that, Dr. Wallace, if, if there is a case in one of our classroom or one of our schools, whose responsibility is it to notify those contacts of that case that they've been potentially exposed?
So it's ultimately the responsibility of the regional health department with support from us. So they've asked all large employers and schools to help support that process. So I've had questions from principals, what's our responsibility outside of the school? That is always the responsibility of the regional health department. But inside the school, we are supporting them in that process.
So the health department, though, as I understand, would actually direct who needs to receive notice?
That's correct.
Then we would support them in actually providing the notice.
That's correct. And, and the letters that we provide them are straight off of the Washington County Regional Health Department, which did put it on Johnson City School Board. So all of that's been in coordination with medical doctors. And I know, listen, it's the same thing that we talked about when we'd have an internet threat. People are scared, and people get nervous. And, and the big, our biggest responsibility was to let people know, we've got a very good plan in place. It's the same thing with this. We have a very good plan in place to protect not only our students, but our staff as well. Any comments about those two documents? So Dr. Barnett, I think there's no questions, that's all I.
Thank you. Next, I think it'd be very helpful to have Dr. Bentley and Dr. Flora coming forward with the Liberty Bell in-person reentry plan. This, there's a calendar that goes with that, that should be helpful for our families. And then what it looks like at Science Hill, there are some differences. Dr. Flora and Dr. Bentley, thank you.
We have been very fortunate to work with our Science Hill High School team. Yesterday afternoon, we spent quite a bit of time here in this room, working through the plan, looking at options and different types of scenarios. We felt like it was very important, one, that the plan for all students be very similar, if we could, just for communication purposes. But yet, we know that each school has some uniqueness, unique features that they will need to be sure and implement. One of the first things we did was, we thought it was very important to pull from Power School students in the same families from both campuses, to make sure that those students can be identified and make it certainly available for the families, make sure those students have the same schedules that the family choose. I'm surprised how many families have students at both schools, it's quite, quite large. So that is one of the things we're working on now, is that communication, to make sure that children in the same family have the same schedule, to make that easier for transportation and just scheduling for the families.
We. Dr. Bentley, just to clarify that, for families that are blended, that might have one in the A category, one in the B category, or A through K and L through Z, they can choose to go on the same day?
Yes.
They just need to let a principal at their school know?
Correct. That's correct. So that was one of the first things, because of certainly the two, the size of the two schools, was to get started on that communication piece. Our Power School specialist even cross-referenced addresses, names of parents that were the same, just to make sure we were trying not to lose a family in this process. So I'll now turn it over to Dr. Flora to share what her administrative team and, and teacher staff, her teacher staff, or teachers will be working on in the next few days.
Thank you, good evening. Our teachers are going to be excited to get children back in our school and in our classrooms. But we, we have been taking very careful measures to make sure we're doing that safely. And so while we did it, but in the summer, Dr. Wallace came over again with us today, and we have walked through our classrooms, taken a look at our numbers and what that would mean for our students to return at fifty percent. And we feel very confident and good about our students being able to distance appropriately in classrooms. Dr. Wallace brought over some additional shields, or class desk barriers, I guess, for teachers to provide, and they were able to determine which kind of barrier they prefer based on their classroom tables and desks. And we're, they were glad to be a part of, a part of that as well. We also were excited to walk through our new gym area and cafeteria area today. And so that was exciting. But we put on all the cafeteria tables and took a look at what that would look like, and feel good that our children are gonna be able to eat and be distanced at the same time very safely. We also took a look and have spent a lot of time looking at our transition plans that students will take from class to class, creating a delayed release for students, so they won't all be in the same hallway at the same time, crossing paths, so that we can hopefully keep that safe and, and do that with teacher escorts as well. And so the, lastly, as we look at moving to an in-person A B schedule, what we have been hard at work at is a training that we'll have for teachers next Tuesday and Wednesday, so that we can provide teachers an opportunity to meet with curriculum and instruction and administration to take a look at how we can provide instruction on those days off, and get the teacher feedback and input on that, to ensure that everybody's on the same page and feel supported and prepared, just to get students back into our classrooms and, and get busy.
Are there any questions? Can you talk a little bit about arrival and dismissal?
So arrival and dismissal. I, I'm learning my way around the building. But we have talked a little bit about that as well. When students arrive on the buses in the morning and by car, we've specifically identified people to ensure that students in the red building are going into the red building, and they're gonna go grab and go breakfast and immediately go to their classroom site. So there is no one, there's no student, there aren't any large gathering spots that are typically present before the school day, like the gym or any common areas. And that same is, that same is true for the blue building. They'll just get out of their cars and be directed in. We've worked with food and nutrition to make sure that there are two different spots in the breezeways, so that students just quickly get their food and go. And in the afternoon, we have a controlled dismissal plan for our buses, so that we can load our buses and distance at the same time. And then our car riders will be dismissed and walked out separately.
So I wanna make this clear, because, I mean, I had kids there for six years, but it's been a little while. So when you're looking at the front of Liberty Bell, the office is in the middle, the red building is here, the blue building is towards the cafeteria. So all of our red building students will be dropped off in the big parking lot in front of the school?
I think that's.
And then the blue building will be parked, dropped off by Freedom Hall, not to impede buses? Is that, how are we that?
And I believe that is a transition plan that was changed this year. And I don't remember the letters of the parking lot, but instead of out front, it's, am I correct that?
Front is parking lot C.
What did you say?
The front is parking lot C.
The huge big parking lot in the front will be for.
And then there, there, the parking lot out at the back, outside of the plaza.
And that's, that's the Freedom Hall parking lot, correct?
No, the plan is for, the area right for the buses are, so, unless it's changed since.
But they'll be coming in, like, around Freedom Hall to drop off?
Yes.
Okay, so blue building drops off at Freedom Hall, the others drop off in front of the school? It's kind of confusing.
To be clear, too, it's not the Freedom Hall side plus the Science Hill or the tennis courts?
Right.
The opposite side.
It'd be great when this goes out to have a map that shows them exactly where they need to be dropped off.
We have a map and videos that are coming out soon to explain the Liberty Bell drop off, and there's a detailed map, so.
Because I know that's confusing in normal times, so.
So anybody watching hears that, we have map and video coming out about pickup and drop off. And the video's key, we have some other videos coming out about what a classroom looks like in an elementary school, what's a classroom look like at the high school at Liberty Bell, what's it look like at our largest elementary school, Indian Trail. And we've done some of that, and put some of that on the back burner, just simply because we need to make sure we're doing in-person, I mean, remote instruction and, but that's, that'll be clarified.
And those videos have actually been created already, too. Colin did a great job coming over and making sure that that was clear, so we could put that out to parents.
Another question.
Sorry, I ran away past you.
Are we at the Freedom Hall?
Yes, well, we, we should. The twenty-third is the date that we have been given to be in the cafeteria and the gym. And when we were there today, the tables are up, the serving lines are out. It's, it's looking.
Joe, I don't know if Joe has, we're still headed that direction, right, twenty-third?
That's correct, as of today.
So Dr. Wallace.
But then was the board member wanting to see the new gym cafeteria, can we do that?
I believe we can arrange a tour.
Thank you. Dr. Doreen Hardhead.
Thank you, go.
I just have one more question. First, welcome to Johnson City Schools, I have the chance to say hello and welcome you, so welcome. You get the best New Year. Because the question is, does clean smart materials for students? So how, how is that, and how does that work for this is in sanitation and cleanliness? How will your staff and students do that, the clean start materials? That's, that, it's, I think it's for when the students clean in between classes? So are it's teachers, staff, and students?
I can, I can address that.
Can you, you want to come up to the microphone?
Yeah. So part of our thought with the clean start process is to be able to provide our teachers these classrooms with cleaning materials, with paper towels, cleaning solution, so that if a teacher or student wanna come in and wipe down their desk or their personal space before class starts, they have that available to them. So and, and all of our teachers will be getting those products prior to us bringing kids into the building. So that's, that's where that came from.
So, so will desks be wiped down between each student if they, if it's used by several students, or will that be up to the student?
The student can do that if they want, teacher will have the opportunity as well.
So I think I had described to me a little bit like the gym. You go to the gym, they want you to clean it before and after, yeah.
I did happen to see something today, or actually, Dr. Fauci today was talking about the spread of the virus. And although it's possible that you can get it from touching other things, it's less likely. Certainly, it's the aerosol stuff that is the biggest concern. So we do have protocols about how often our buildings are cleaned, high, high-frequency areas, certainly playgrounds at the elementary level. But it's looking like that's less of a concern than obviously the drop offs.
Mr. Barnett, Science Hill High School, and Dr. David Tims. Thank you, Dr. Flora, and Dr. Bentley.
Before we talk a little bit about Science Hill, I'll hop back to some of the questions that we had earlier regarding what may happen or what could happen instructionally, especially with, I guess in my mind, what I call short-term closure, where students would be at for possible, short-term. We've been thinking about this for months, we currently have a bid.
And you're not talking about the whole school system?
No, we're talking about in a classroom, in a classroom, or. We have a bid currently over at the city. We tried out a lot of high-def digital cameras during closure. Josh Berry, Mathier at the high school, we must have gone through four or five different ones that we tried. And the math department at the high school is pretty well-equipped right now with all these different ones that we try. In fact, it's what Mr. Berry, Mr. Wondergem, several of them are using in their daily instruction right now. So we had allocated fifty thousand dollars from CARES money to purchase more of those for the district. The really good ones, I'm hoping the bid comes in, good will run anywhere between two and three hundred dollars. The, the price has gone up recently just because of supply and demand, which is no surprise. So we will very quickly, myself and Tina Faust, our instructional design coach, be able to get those into teachers' rooms when these situations occur, when we need to provide an opportunity for some live streaming instruction or some recording. And they're very easy, they're just plug-and-play, they will hook into the teacher laptops. And Mr. Berry has really projected a method for us. He's gonna create some instructional how-to videos for us to share with teachers as these, as these situations arise, so that we can be teaching from the classroom to our short-term closure students at home, when and if that need arises. So we're working through some of those procedures and protocols. I don't want the board to think we haven't thought about that. And we'll be able to deploy a package very quickly that would be able to be used by a teacher, and then we would be able to pull it back out and move it to another location. And the other thing that we'll be using those for will be our hybrid classes at the high school, and we have a few of those. There's some in CTE, Ms. Trace, you asked about that. We also have some in our AP Singleton classes, where we just didn't have enough students to offer both the fully remote and a, an onsite class. And for example, Mr. Berry's honors pre-calculus is one of those classes. So he has students who are in registered remote, who will be at home all semester. And when we come back to in-person learning, we'll have some of those students in honors pre-cap there with him, and he will be instructing both at the same time. We've really tried to keep that to very rare occurrences, but because of some of the demand of some of our CTE classes, especially if students are trying to complete a sequence of classes to be completers in that, or for some of our high-end honors math, science courses, those, we've really had to try to recreate it and with those teachers and thinking about how this will work when we transition in just a few weeks. So like Dr. Flora said, we've got a team, two of Dr. Flora's assistant principals, two of Mr. Barnett's assistant principals are meeting on Friday to map out what a week will look like on this A B proposed schedule, so that we really are able to, when we get Mr. Crabtree over here, tap down some teacher anxiety, because there's a lot of anxiety right now, both about safety and about just getting through the curriculum. And be able to map out a course forward for us in Johnson City Schools, especially in the public through twelve, to move through the required curriculum and still have students prepared, while yet also knowing that teachers will have a very different planning strategy with having video content loaded on those days, as well as being able to fully focus on the A or the B day when the students are there. So we're hoping to work, we're working with the high school staff next Tuesday on that. And I think that's also where you all are working with the Liberty Bell staff.
I think it's, you know, we've said this, but it's lost on a lot of people. We are still by the state required to have six and a half hours of construction for a hundred and eighty days this school year.
Either synchronous or asynchronous.
So it's not like we can say, let's just cut down to, let's cut some of these classes out because they're not as important. So, it's not like we can say, let's just cut down to, let's cut some of these classes out because they're not as important. We are required by the state to have six and a half hours of instruction for a hundred and eighty days this school year.
And the other thing that we have to keep in mind, especially at the high school, but, and I want to commend Dr. Carter, who is our scheduling assistant principal at the high school and our six counselors. We also have students who have to meet credit requirements for graduation. We, we have had no forgiveness for this year. You know, we had a little bit in the spring for the seniors of twenty twenty, but as of right now, we are still scheduling them into classes to make sure they're on track beneath those graduation requirements. And we have right at, just as a reminder, seven hundred Science Hill students who are part of our fully registered remote this semester. So, we have them all on track to give the credits they need for graduation.
Mr. Barnett? Did I, sorry, I had two things. One, I've heard anxiety. Our seats up here, I think, are full of anxiety. We feel the pain. And then on a latter moment, I knew if I, I knew in nineteen sixty-three, if I kept that tie.
It comes back around, doesn't it?
Congratulations on your wardrobe.
I needed a laugh.
Sometime this winter, I'll wear mine.
Can I just say thank you to all of our schools and our principals and, and especially our central office staff? You all have had a heck of a month between the computers and the rescheduling and, I mean, putting every kid into the proper class at the proper time based on A, B now and social distancing and all of that. I commend you for all the work you've done. I know there's been many sleepless nights amongst, amongst a lot of people in this room, but I'm very impressed to see how much work has gone on. And I think a lot of our parents at home don't realize the amount of work you all have done to try and get this to work. To hand-schedule in twenty-four hundred students at Science Hill into the proper classes when you're used to doing it by computer is absolutely unbelievable to do in like a week and a half. Additionally, at Liberty Bell and at Indian Trail, I mean, it's, it's a whole lot easier for the elementary schools, but people don't realize trying to fit twenty-four hundred pieces of a puzzle into an eight-by-five grid is ridiculous by hand. So, thank you.
And, and let's not forget teachers. I mean, we've heard, we've heard story after story of teachers that have gone above and beyond this, this last week and trying to figure, making sure everything runs as smoothly when, when every roadblock we could think of was thrown at them.
As anxious as all of us have been, and I want to throw a huge shout out to Molly Thread, she was in here a minute ago. And the teachers in this room and the ones listening and, and I, I live with one, they have, you know, when that, when A, B, C, D, E, F plan doesn't work, they just go to G. And it's been amazing to hear, they have just kept the wheels going on instruction this week. They have kept the wheels going.
I'd like to add to that. I, I really hope that our teachers know that and our staff because I remember one of my first meetings, I said, our Johnson City School teachers can teach an entire standards and curriculum with a box of toothpicks and a bottle of glue. And I still believe that you should never teach with that. However, I never, so, I don't know. I send praises out to all of, all of the, our staff and teachers. One quick question, actually two. So, how does this have an impact on band, chorus, showstoppers and our, the Topper Academy students?
So, I know that Mr. Barnett will probably speak to the safety concerns of some of those. So, Topper Academy students, we started the year with approximately right at one hundred registered at Topper Academy. And right at half of those selected a remote learning option for the semester. So, obviously with our EdMentum platform that we use, that was pretty seamless for them, as long as we could get them the device. And Mr. Leo, who is now at Topper Academy, has plenty of staff there. They are really just moving those kids along, progressing toward, for a lot of them, they're working toward a Science Hill diploma. A lot are working toward a State of Tennessee diploma. So, they're moving right along. Band and chorus, of course, have, and showstoppers, I believe, and, and I've been down inside of Mr. Marshall and Mr. Graybill's classes, and I'm very, very impressed with what they're doing virtually. They have been very creative. In fact, Mr. Graybill has built out the virtual class for five eighth in drama and in theater. That's being, that's being delivered. So, that piece is moving on. And if you could watch Mr. Marshall's videos, I could give you the test of that. Chorus, I think, has been a little more, you know, we've had to really think through that because of the singing and Mr. Barnett will probably speak to that. And band as well, though, band, as you all are probably aware, has been, you know, continuing to practice. As Tracey, I know you're aware of this. And are fully following all those protocols. And I know all of us are on emails from Dr. Vermillion and Mr. McGuire, who are sending us a, they are doing a lot of research themselves. And I think parents in the community need to know our band directors, and that's probably true for Liberty Bell and Indian Trail as well, are doing a lot of research themselves on what can and cannot safely happen when we return to any class instruction. But, you know, they're, they're following a lot of that already with, with what's going on in band practice in the evenings.
And one of the things I'd say along the lines of band, as a matter of fact, I got an email from Dr. Vermillion a little bit earlier today. We'll work with those teachers, band, chorus, orchestra individually on trying to develop a plan to have their kids there when they need them. For example, professors, they run across the alphabet, but they need to be together. So, we'll work with those, again, we'll work with those individuals, make sure they can be where they need to be.
Some fully remote we're coming in.
And the remote ones can come in obviously and work on their own. Orchestra, chorus, we'll be doing the same thing. We'll be getting with Ms. Lambert and Ms. Oates and just getting their input on what works best for them. If there's certain ways we have to provide those students up similar to what we do with common families with different last names. So, we'll be working with them on some of that. Logistically, Science Hill is a little different than other schools simply because we have a significant number of our students who drive. So, one of the things we'd like to try when we come back, if we're allowed to come back on the thirty-first, is we want to do a staggered arrival. We want to encourage, our bus arrival is, is set. Eldona sets that. And they typically come in starting to just touch after seven, and the last bus usually drops off about seven twenty-five. So, what we're going to encourage to our families and our student drivers is for families who are car riders to drop off beginning around seven twenty, seven twenty-five. And at that point, ask those students to go directly to their class, minimize time in the hallways, minimize transition times. And our student driver will be parking in the range like they always do and, and parking in the tiered parking areas. And we're going to, and this basically happens anyway, is our, our kids typically arrive to the range or the tiered park around seven thirty and then just walk right on to class. So, we've kind of formalized that a little bit with asking our student drivers to get there between seven thirty, seven thirty-five, go directly to class. We bumped the start time of the day up five minutes to seven forty-five to allow for that movement and, and getting on campus and cutting our, our student body down in half to start back. We feel like we have four drop-off locations. We have by old cafeteria, we have ninth grade side, CTE, and then by the new gym, where we've all, the same four locations we've had. So, those four locations combined with the staggered arrival time, we feel like we can kind of keep the halls moving and we can get students in class pretty efficient. So, any questions over any of that?
And so, we'll, you'll be dealing with not only just half the student body on those days, but half the student body minus those, those students that have chosen to do all the remote. So, so people that are picturing all those students coming in, it'll be a much smaller number.
And, and for the record, about, we will have about fifteen, sixty in-person students, and we're cutting that number slightly in half, or about. Lunch, and I know that's a, an important piece with how we're going to arrange those students. Our typical lunch size is going to be somewhere between, I want to say one sixty to two hundred each lunch. Keep in mind, we have our old cafeteria, which we haven't necessarily, we haven't really used for the last couple of years. We have needed to. We have plenty of tables. We have Grand Hopper Hall. We have the old cafeteria. And we've identified some outdoor space for students who may want to eat out, outside. And we're, and we're looking at a couple of different arrangements for seating to make sure that they're still appropriately distanced. And we feel pretty good about that. Our largest, as of right now, our largest lunch shift is about one ninety-six. So, we're going to have seating available in, in all three of those areas, the outside area, Grand Hopper Hall and the old cafeteria for about two fourteen to two twenty, somewhere through there. So, we should have plenty around. And then at the end of the day, we talked, we talked quite a bit about having staggered dismissal. But one of the things that we, that we arrived at was Liberty Bell, their dismissal time works really well with our dismissal time. And for the most part, for the last couple of years, the buses have been either staged at our, at our place or coming into the parking lot as we're dismissing. So, we, in effect, we have students going directly to the buses. We have students going directly to their cars. And then we have students going directly to parent pickup. And they're all going different directions. So, we will probably, our thought is to try dismissal like we always do it, since they're all going in different areas. And if we need to take a look at that and look at some type of staggered dismissal, we can put that in place pretty easily.
We're expecting a lot more car riders. We had fewer parents sign up for the bus, just while we're on that. Two to a seat if necessary with mask on the bus. And Eldona Genjital is working on that, that plan. But we feel like with the decreased membership, it's going to put a burden, it will put, it would put a burden on the car line, but we have remote learners at every school that'll take some of that load off. Indian Trail is a big pinch point for cars. And we're hoping that the numbers that they have are being lower than allowed. But there are more who are going to be in person who chose not to be bus riders. So, it still increases that number some, so we'll see what that looks like.
Transitions between classes. Our students will be wearing masks at all times. We've identified several places in the building we can do one-way traffic, especially over in the, in the historic area where the halls are a little bit more narrow. We're going to look at doing one-way traffic there where we can, two-way traffic in the, in, in the wider halls. And we, we've, we have purchased a bunch of directional signage to help our kids, our, our students have arrows pointing which way they can. The social distance and six-foot signs, some of those things. And we've cut, in the main part of the building, we've cut transition time down to six minutes to encourage our students to get on to the next class. We're going to make an allowance for students transitioning from main campus to CTE, obviously because of the, the length of the walk getting down there and for our kids coming back up from CTE to main campus. So, they'll, they'll still be on their eight-minute transition time, but the typical transition time will be about six minutes. Any questions about the resistance of any of this?
What is this home base down here?
Home base is a program we started this year. And the philosophy behind home base is we want every student in our building to be connected to an adult for the entire time they're there. So, if you were one of our staff members and you had a home base of, and it works out to about fourteen to seventeen students and they're freshmen, they, they would be your home base for the four years. We have some specific curriculum pieces we go, we want to go over with them. But a large part of that is like an advisor role to get to know them, to know what they need, to be able to refer them appropriately as they move through Science Hill. And, and just to have every student in our building to have an adult connection the whole time they're there.
So, it's kind of like home room when I was in high school. Will they also do like announcements during that time while they're in that class or will they still be in their first?
We will still do, we will still do announcements like we've done with the safety block between safety change breakfast. But that period, if you notice, is a little bit longer. This time is about twenty-five minutes. So, there, there'll be some time where they'll have time to interact just with, with their home-based teacher. But we, we feel strongly that every student in our building needs to have, have an adult connection. And, you know, in years past with home room, we meet two or three times in the fall, two or three times in the spring. That's basically it. So, we hope to capture a lot of kids who may have interest in activities and things at school that they don't necessarily get involved in through these long-term connections with adults. We hope, we hope to encourage our kids to get more involved and be more part of the culture of the school.
So, you're saying that student will have the same home-based teacher for all four years?
That is correct.
So, one quick thing on here, I'm looking at the thing about gators, which I just learned what that was today. Says, gators do not meet the minimum requirement. So, staff and students, parents will have access to that information that that's not required.
Yes, that's correct. We'll push all that out.
And then the second one says masks are not required to be worn during lunch. Now, I remember lunch is from when the bell rings to when the bell rings. So, will students think I can walk down the hallway to lunch without a mask?
During the time they're in the cafeteria.
Okay.
Because the, the way we have our seating arranged, they're plenty of distance apart from each other.
So.
In the caf, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, not just in the cafeteria, but seated in the cafeteria.
Seated in the cafeteria, that's correct, while they're eating.
That might need to be just kind of tested on because lunch today is going, if I recall.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you. Appreciate you.
I take that back. I do have a question. Dr. Tims may be better answer this. This is about the ACT plan I'm giving. I think it might be good to let everyone know about that.
So, if you will notice on your, on your calendar, the week of September the twenty-first, we actually have a little different flow that week. A day is on Monday, B or, remote learning day that week will be on Tuesday, the twenty-second. And the reason for that, and also with Dr. Wall, our district testing coordinator, we had a meeting to talk about the required student or the senior retake ACT that will be given statewide on September the twenty-second. And to be able to do that in a very safe environment for our seniors, we are asking that that day be designated as the remote learning day for that week so that everyone except for seniors will be at home learning on an asynchronous day. And we've already done the, the planning. Dr. Morgan, who is the chief coordinator at the high school now, we will be distributing all the seniors over approximately fifty classrooms. And they will have a test administrator and a proctor in each one of those rooms so that we can keep the numbers of seniors testing to around ten per classroom. And our fully remote students who, which part of the parent, parent remote guide did tell them that for state-required assessments, there would be the need to come to the school. We are actually planning on testing all of those students in the CTE building so that they will have, not have to come as deep into the building, of the main building as perhaps our in-person students. And then all students will be dismissed as soon as we're finished testing. So, that's how we would like to handle our state-required ACT tests. As you know, in the past, we usually bring all those students into the new gym, have tables, and we have approximately five hundred students in there testing with around twenty-five to thirty staff. We felt like this would be a much safer approach for our seniors who need to take the ACT in.
Can you also explain the other part of that ACT about the, that you all told us on Monday about the junior test that they missed and getting a voucher?
Yes, so for this year, because the junior test would have been the week we returned from spring break in the spring, and Dr. Wall, correct me if I'm wrong, because we missed that, the state is actually issuing a voucher to those students and they can use that on any national test date this year. ACT has really expanded their national test dates for this year because of the pandemic and including some Sunday dates. So, that will be very advantageous for families to be able to take advantage of that extra ACT because as you all know, ACT is one of those items that really can translate into scholarship dollars for our students. And, you know, we're proud of, you know, we'll probably have some official data next month, but the trends. but the trends from last year looked really, really strong. The class of twenty twenty really improved their ACT scores from where they were the year.
Still in the bargain.
Yes, probably.
Dr. Walker, still in the bargain?
I won't say any numbers.
The state reported scores have not been released. Well, we have already uh the first round of ACT scores.
Okay, we'll wait till we have a decision.
Yeah.
Also, also just so our senior parents who might be watching know, the last real date you want to take the ACT as a senior, it would be just the one of the December test dates. Is that correct to get it back in time to go to colleges?
As a parent, I'm telling you, as a parent of two college students, I strongly encourage that that December date is the that.
Okay, just so if any senior parents are listening, they know that too. That would be a great thing to put out with that when you when you send that information out to our senior parents.
Dr. Tims, will juniors be allowed to take on the September twenty-second?
The September twenty-second is just for our current seniors.
But there will be a junior date in.
There will be a junior date in the spring. We totally anticipate that.
Did you want to cover anything in general on the calendar? Because I got some specific questions.
Um sure. I mean, we did uh we did note on here, of course, about ACT. And um like Dr. Barnett pointed out, we went ahead and mapped this out. Dr. Bentley and I worked on this uh through the end of December. We're asking in this first vote that this get us through fall break, and then obviously if we needed to, we could reevaluate as we talked earlier. And then we also made a note in November that scheduling changes after Thanksgiving will be dictated by what the State Department of Education tells us about how we're going to handle end-of-course exams at the high school. And so we will need to look at our December staggering, if we're still uh doing staggering uh staggering attendance at that point to make sure that we can get students in on those required testing dates.
Okay, so follow me here. Just a suggestion. Um September, when we hit Labor Day, that throws things off because of being off that Monday. So from there until Election Day, the the can normally the A and B would be that the same thing on Monday, Tuesday would be taught by the teacher, same thing on Thursday, Friday. But once you hit that day, then the same thing will be taught Tuesday, Thursday, and then Friday, Monday.
I think we've not decided on the current, the model yet. We're going to be working with teachers on what that model.
Well, su- suggestion would be instead of having that remote day on the ninth, make the eighth and ninth A-B days because having a remote day when one of your uh groups is on B and one of yours is on A isn't going to be the most helpful. That's going to be really confusing. And then that would get fixed once you get back to Election Day and make that Wednesday, November fourth uh a B day. And then you get two more in-person days also.
Absolutely.
And then a related question, the November, the twenty-third and twenty-fourth, is there a reason those are remote days?
That was for some teacher input. And especially at the high school, we don't know what after Thanksgiving may look like because of A-C testing.
Okay, that's that's good. But the uh September thing, if you add that uh B day in up there on the uh or A-B on the eighth and the ninth, that might make it easier going until you hit Election Day.
Other questions for Dr. Tims or?
If I could just add one more thing as we talked about as we prepared to open August tenth and we opened August tenth, working with uh over twenty-six hundred uh full remote students plus in-person. I did want to give a shout out to uh Keela Brady, band director at Indian Trail, Kevin Howard, uh band director at Liberty Bell, and then Susan Sterling Lambert, our orchestra teacher. As we started looking at the applications for students, especially in grade five, eight, we could see quickly there was no way that registered remote students could probably come into their buildings for band or orchestra. It the schedule just wasn't going to work. Several uh students, um families had multiple children, and they just couldn't make it work either. I want to uh share that these uh band and orchestra teachers stepped up, contacted us and said, you know, it's just killing us that these registered remote children are not able to be part of our classes. Could we develop courses for after-school to keep them connected, to keep them as band members, as orchestra members? And uh we said absolutely. In fact, we'll find a little compensation because they are working after hours. But I just thought that was such a just exemplary attitude of of people who who said, I want to make this work somehow. I wanted it to work for them, but also wanted to work for our band and orchestra. So I do want to shout out, I know Dr. Jacobs worked with Ms. Brady and Ms. Lambert to to do that. So they're in the process of developing these Canvas courses that these uh students, hopefully when they can return in person, can easily come right back into the orchestra program and their band program and be ready. So I did want to give a shout out to the, just the work that we're seeing as teachers come across ideas and things and go, hey, I think this would work. So I just wanted to share that with you.
Thanks for mentioning that. That's a that's a great example of how our teachers really want to teach students. And uh to go back to some things that were said earlier, just the collaboration, the way they help each other and work together, um it's just been amazing. It's not surprising, but it's amazing what what the teachers have been doing and administrators and uh support staff. Everybody just really wants to serve the community at a high level.
You said something that's not surprising, and that's exactly right because that's what our teachers do, whether there's a pandemic or just every other normal day. Um that's what I've always been impressed with as my top on this board is how our teachers are always committed to taking care of our students, no matter the environment, no matter the obstacle, no matter the resources. And so, Dr. Bentley, thank you for sharing that example. I I just think it's exemplary of what our um what our entire teaching and staff uh do on a day-in, day-out basis, no matter what.
Yes, go ahead. Go ahead. Just one one last comment. You know, our hope is that our numbers of COVID cases flatten, go down. Then you can relax uh some of the protocols that we have in place, be able to relax those. And then our hope sooner rather than later is to get all of our our middle school and high school students back in uh back in person. And uh we as a community, continue to follow those safety protocols, continue to do your part. And for all of us to do that in our schools, uh to keep our staff healthy, keep them at school, working. Uh the contact tracing is going to be so important in following through, making sure we keep everybody safe. But everybody in the community doing their part as well to help our students stay healthy and our staff, our teachers, and our support staff to stay healthy as well. That's that's going to be huge because we want to be uh we want school to be as normal as possible until it is normal again.
So um as much as I don't think we have to have a vote for Dr. Barnett and the staff to implement this, I think we need to to show our support uh behind it because they have put a tremendous amount of work in this. And I do think this is our our best option going forward. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt all of this plan that we just heard and start on the August thirty-first.
Okay, make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay. So discussion, questions?
To be clear, because some people may have tuned in later, um if you, if this passes and you want to continue with what you signed up for originally, you don't have to do anything. If you feel that you might want to change the choice you made, you should contact your school.
That's correct.
By Friday afternoon.
Prefer by Friday afternoon at four o'clock so we can start working on schedule changes and everything we need to do this weekend.
Because there's no time for rest for the weird. Our staff is amazing. Just everything they've done with this thing continually changing, just can't say enough uh from the central office on down to to everybody, teachers, staff, food service, jam, truck, bus, and everything.
Other discussion, questions?
I'm just concerned, please, you mentioned start date of August thirty-first. What if we hear from the Department of Health, uh Marshall County Health Department that uh they have some issues with numbers again? Do we remodify? Do we? I just want to make sure that you're looking at that as well.
I think we're heading in the right direction. Uh I've things I've heard from from uh public health. I think we're in the right direction. I think our community's committed to it. So I think we're going to be going.
And just to remind, we're not using that single data either anymore. So we're using, we're starting with.
Microphone.
Sorry, just remember, we're not using that single data point. So I think that's a really important piece that we started out with this evening, that we're not using that green, yellow, red. It's it's a combination of the two numbers that's helping us use that rubric, which will then help us make decisions, even if we have community spread, has it affected a particular school or a particular class? That that would be more relevant than any one single one.
Having having said that, though, the the Health Department has given this plan their blessing. And they contacted us and said, you need to change. We would listen. That would be a discussion.
That that's correct. We we we're daily contacted.
I'll give you an example of the change we have we made because the Health Department said they would not, they were with the proof. Because our original plans said you'd sit at your desk, no mask. Student could relax that and work. And they said, at the current levels, we need everybody to wear a mask. It's been working. You need to do it. So that's something that we adjusted. So we we could make make adjustments. And uh I think I'm hoping that the adjustment allows us to go back to our original where we could sit at a seat or do your work and relax that sooner rather than later.
And and Michelle's your question. I mean, it's like everything we've done for these last quite few months. If something happens and we got to make a decision to do something different, that's that's what we'll do. But I would say at this point, you know, a week and a half away, uh we're planning on going the thirty-first. And that will just take it day by day, just like our staff is doing and our teachers do, and and uh stay on top of the things and figure it out.
Yeah, I'd like to also thank our administrators and our teachers, but I'd I'd also like to thank our parents and our students uh for their understanding and patience. You know, we're sailing in uncharted waters here with a lot of different headwinds like technology issues, parents trying to teach, uh untrained parents trying to teach multiple children at home, some children with special needs. And it's it's been difficult and challenging for everybody. So I I appreciate parents that have reached out to us and um thanked our our staff for all their hard work too.
Other comments or questions?
Before we vote, I do want to say that I'm going to support the motion. And there are those who would question my support for the motion, even my position on uh starting back the contact sports. So I want to explain why I'm supporting the motion. One is the quality of the plan that we have in place. This is an amazing plan that has been vetted very thoroughly through um direct communication with the Department of Health as well as um in in the keeping with a lot of authorities that are out there for uh how to safely bring children back into school. Um and so, you know, echoing what a lot of others have said, I want to commend our staff for the hard work. And this has been hard work over months to uh come up with this plan, to secure the supplies, which I know firsthand are very difficult uh to to secure in a lot of instances. Um so for that reason, um secondly, uh it's become clear over the last couple of weeks that we have significant numbers of students that don't have adequate support, encouragement, or resources at home to be successful in an all uh online environment. And so I do fear that we have a lot of students who are going to fall through the cracks, um that we will have a lot of students who um may fall behind. And so I think that it's important to allow those students to be able to come and and take advantage of in-person learning. Um I do think, uh you know, our board has voted to allow in-person or to allow uh contact sports. And I think a decision to keep our students out of school while we're allowing our students to have contact sports is incredibly inconsistent. And so I think we have to have consistent positions on student activities. And and I think that this is um voting in favor of this makes our decisions consistent. And then finally, um our numbers in the region are leveling off and even reducing. And at this point, I want to say that over the last three weeks, um our region has seen a dramatic drop in the number of positive cases that are being uh reported. Also, the positivity rate of cases has gone down significantly. That is a direct result, folks, of the mask mandate and people doing what they need to do to keep themselves and others safe. And so by bringing our students back, we are taking some risk. But that risk is greatly mitigated as demonstrated by the numbers, by everyone wearing masks. And it's true, children are going to rip their masks off and they're going to do stuff. But if we work hard to keep them wearing their masks in school and out of school, if the families, um all of our teachers and everyone are conscious and they wear their masks, we will continue to see a decline in our region, which means that we will also have the opportunity to keep our schools open and will also keep our people um safe and healthy in the schools. So I do want to encourage everybody to make sure that they don't consider this the end of the mask-wearing. It's the beginning of the need to wear them if we want to keep our children in school, um in person. So for all those reasons, um I'll support the motion.
I'll say one last tidbit on that number we're not using anymore because some people were really stuck on that. I'm a numbers person, so I graphed it out since they only show it one day at a time. On August first, it changed from a slant like that to be a level. And on the seventh, it changed to be going down. So just like you're saying, there is numbers out there showing that we are doing better. The numbers are going better, but we got to keep doing what we're doing with the masks. And hopefully uh this will work like we're hoping. Like Dr. Barnett said, it's not like we expect to get out of this without having any kind of cases or closing a classroom here or there. But we take them one at a time. We follow the rubric and uh do the best we can.
Other comments or questions? All right, we'll take a vote. We'll do a vote by voice, by a body, and a roll call, please.
Mr. Tom Hager?
Yes.
Ms. Kathy Hall?
Yes.
Mr. John McKinnick?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle Tree?
Yes.
Ms. Paul Tree?
Yes.
Mr. Robert Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Tim Ball?
Yes.
And?
Okay, motion passes. So everybody get ready. Kids are coming.
Thank you all. Um I do want to reiterate, you guys have done fantastic work. Um and please pat your teachers on the back. I'm going to be sending out a um a video to them very soon. But please pat them on the back and let them know that this board appreciates what they've had to go through. I will disagree a little bit with Mr. Hager. We do feel anxiety up here for what's going on. And I know it's nothing like you guys feel, but y'all are in the trenches having to deal with um everything. And so please express to your teachers how much we appreciate their flexibility, their creativity, their um willingness to pivot um and to do the things that are necessary to try and make sure that these students are receiving as best an education as we can provide to them. And and thank each of you all for all your part in that.
Anything else to come before the board or adjourn?